To call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for Homewood School, District 153 for August 15, 2022. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Thank you. Two of our board members are not here tonight because they are with their children, taking them to sleepaway school, otherwise known as college. All right. We have the approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting of July 11, 2022, and the special board meeting of July 26, 2022. Are there any additions or corrections to either set of minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we have future dates.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. One of my favorite days of the year was today, when we got to welcome all of our new staff members. So we began our four-day orientation and welcomed over 20 new staff members to District 153. So that's always an exciting time for us. And then one week from today, we have our institute day. So Monday, teachers will be here for an opening keynote right here in this space. And then on Tuesday, we have a staff development day. And Wednesday is the first day with students, August 24th. So super excited about that. And then open house, James Hart Open House, on the original calendar that went out, it was scheduled for September 1st. We discovered, calendar error, HF has their open house the same night. So we are moving James Hart Open House one night before. So August 31st is going to be James Hart Open House, and then Thursday night is the HF. And then our Churchill and Willow open houses are in September. So those are the big highlights, but definitely an exciting part of the year.
Great. Thank you. So we have a presentation tonight to explain to the community about the November 8th referendum.
We have a television audience, I should say. All right. So the referendum, it's on the ballot for the November election. And what Ms. Marks and I would like to talk to you tonight about is a little bit of the history, but also why we feel we need this referendum, implications if we don't get the referendum, et cetera. So our goal is to inform as much as possible and certainly answer your questions that you may have. First of all is, why do we need this? So a little bit, without going into detail, Illinois school finance, the way we fund schools is not necessarily an easy thing to understand. But a few years ago, the state created what they call evidence-based funding. And that is a formula that was designed to provide more state tax money to districts that quote-unquote "needed it," as determined by local property tax revenue. In our state, local property taxes fund anywhere from 2/3 to 3/4 of school districts, which is why you really see some great discrepancies between communities. And so, as part of the evidence-based funding formula, the state came up with what they call an adequacy target. And I'll talk more about that in a second. But suffice it to say, an adequacy target is, what does it take to provide a top-notch education? What are the factors that are proven to show have a success on positive student learning? And then they determine how much local tax revenue districts collect to provide that top-notch education. And once they did that, they broke every district in the state into quartiles. And Tier 1, the top 1/4 of schools, I guess I should say the bottom 1/4 of schools, Tier 1 are the lowest-funded schools, those that receive the least amount of local tax revenue to fund the children's education in those communities. Tier 4 are the top quartile of schools. And by the state's definition, I don't have this behind me, but if a district receives 100% of what they need, then they classify as Tier 4. You can see one of our neighbors, Tinley Park, they're Tier 3, so they're in that second highest quartile, and they have 97% of what they need. And then you look at just our three, well, us and our two immediate neighbors, all of us are Tier 1, and you can see our adequacy level is 65%. Plus more, 161, and HF, a little bit higher, but still not nearly what we need to provide that top-notch education. So what exactly is the adequacy target? What goes into that? And the easiest way to put it is, there's 34 variables that the state determined provide this top-notch education. What I've shown you here are 12 of the 34. But they're all ones that you would recognize, and all ones that you would say, that makes sense, that if you have these things, it would be better for kids and learning than if you didn't. For example, and this is from Ms. B's website, you can Google it and quickly find the same slide that I did, but basically, K through 3 shows a primary school, LI is low-income, and then non-low-income. So the recommendation on core teachers is that you have a ratio, a staff-to-student ratio of 15 to 1. If it is a non-low-income, in other words, a wealthier school, that ratio can go up to 20 to 1. And then if it's, let's say, for us, Churchill all the way up to high school, low-income, 20 to 1, non-low-income, 25 to 1. So that's just how you interpret that. I'm not going to do that on every one of these variables. But basically, how many teachers do you have? What is commonly called class size, or student-to-staff ratio? How many specialists do you have? Do you promote the arts? Do you have an industrial arts program? Do you have a STEM program? Instructional facilitators, coaches, teaching, teachers teaching teachers, essentially? Core interventionists, and this is one of the big ways that education has changed in the last 20 to 30 years. When I was in school, no such thing as RTI, Response to Intervention. There weren't math interventionists and reading interventionists. Our job is to educate every student, and some students logically need a little bit more time. So we have trained specialists to provide those interventions. And places that have more interventionists are able to provide better support to kids. Guidance counselors, support staff, nurses in every building, supervisors, libraries, aides, administrators, substitutes, I mean, these are just some of the variables. But you throw all those into a blender, and that's how they create this adequacy target. And if you have all these things, then you're able to provide an adequate education. And going back to local property tax provides, let's say, 70% of the funding schools get. If you don't have enough revenue collected locally, then you are below that 100% level, okay? And again, we are at 65% by the state's definition. So where do we get the other 35%? The state government does kick in some state revenue. The federal government kicks in some federal revenue. But whatever the difference is, is what we have to borrow, okay? And so, we have borrowed for years to close that gap, to provide an A-plus education, while also recognizing we don't have the funds that the state says we need. This is still me. Very good. So, for the most recent fiscal year, last school year, 2021-22, we had a deficit of about $1,500,000. This is a planned deficit. So the first thing people hear when they say, hear the word deficit, is you think, oh goodness, that's not a good thing, right? We knew that we would have a deficit, based on our staffing levels and based on the revenue that we're receiving. How do we pay for that deficit? Very simply. In 2016, we went to the community, and we had a referendum, and we said, we have a deficit, and we need extra revenue to support our current level of services. So this is no different than a household budget, right? We all know, if we don't bring in enough money, the only way to balance the budget is to increase your revenue or decrease your costs. So what we have done twice, and we'll talk more about this little bit of history, in 2011 and in 2016, we had working cash referendums that the community overwhelmingly supported, which gave us an injection of money anywhere from $7.5 to $10 million, and then we slowly spent that down. And we said at the time of that referendum, this money will last us five to seven years. And both times, that's exactly how long it's lasted. This chart shows you, let me just briefly explain, because there's a lot of information contained. The gray kind of mountain that you see there, those are our expenditures. That's our spending. And over time, spending goes up, mostly due to inflation, right? Costs rise over time. Teacher wages, personnel, which is 85% of virtually every district's budget, is people, those costs rise over time. So you can see the gray mountain climbing over time. And then these three bars, green, red, and blue, represent local, state, and federal revenue. What we focus on is the black line, okay? The black line is kind of our savings account, what we call a fund balance. It's how much cash we have available for a rainy day. And since we are deficit spending, that cash on hand, that rainy day fund declines, and then you see, whoops, it jumped back up. That's the referendum money. So in 2016, we passed that referendum and got another injection of money. So we were able to build up our fund balances, and then over time, have slowly spent those down again. The last bit of information that I'll point out on this slide is this horizontal line here, where it says 25% minimum fund balance. So the recommendation from the state is that you keep X amount of dollars in your rainy day fund in case of emergencies. And so we've always shot for that 25% of expenditure level. We want 25%. And here, we dipped below, we got the referendum, and we shot back above that 25%. But you can see over time, we're spending it down, spending it down, to the point where we are now in fiscal year '23, this is the 2022-23 school year, and you can see, we are below our ideal rainy day fund. Our fund balance is now at a point where it is concerning to us, okay? Any questions on this? We have a small crowd, we can entertain questions in the middle. Okay, very good.
So a little bit of history. How have we funded the schools and paid our structural deficit in the past? In 1992, the community approved a 75% increase in the limiting rate. That's the last time we approved a limiting rate increase. Now, since then, there have been tax caps, we haven't been able to get all of that money. And the state structured school funding, so that if we were to pass another limiting rate increase, we would have gotten less money from the state. So instead of asking for a limiting rate increase, when we needed more money, in 2011, we asked the community to approve the sale of bonds for $7.5 million. Again, if you think back to that graph we just saw, we had an infusion of money that we planned on spending down to cover our structural deficit. Planned spending. In 2016, we asked the community again if we can borrow $9 million to pay for what we planned on. Both times, the community said, come on, guys, can't you find a permanent solution? We don't want you to keep coming to us. And both times, the answer was, no, there is no permanent solution, because if we ask for a limiting rate increase, we won't be able to get the money that we need to get from the state. But since that last referendum, things have changed, and we can now ask for this limiting rate increase, which will allow us to do so much more, and not to come back to the community every six or seven years. So why don't we cut costs to balance the budget? I think that's a really fair question. We believe very strongly in providing the best possible education for each and every student, regardless of how they come to us, what needs they come to us with. We want to provide every student with what they need. We staff according to the needs of our students, and strive to provide a holistic education. So we're not just teaching kids to read and write and do math, we're teaching kids how to be good citizens, how to collaborate, how to get along with each other. We're teaching them the things that we hope they're passionate about, art and music. We're providing STEM labs, we're providing physical education with certified PE teachers five days a week. That's the law in Illinois, but we're one of a handful of districts that actually does it. And it's something that we feel is very important. We believe in low-class sizes, interventions, enrichment, like I said, physical education every day, fine arts and athletic and extracurricular programs. As you know, we provide extracurricular programs for kids beginning at our youngest grades, going all the way through 8th grade. Again, we want to give kids a chance to find their passion and follow it, but we also want our students to have that really special connection with teachers, because that connection keeps kids grounded in school. It gives them an adult they trust when they need an adult they trust. And lastly, any cuts to our current staffing will have a direct impact on students. Our community has clearly told us, time after time, what is important to them, and how important the schools are, and what they want our schools to look like. Any cuts at all will change how our schools look, and how we can provide a first-rate education to our kids.
So one of the logical questions is, well, what happens if this doesn't pass? What is the implication to the district if this doesn't pass? And going back to that deficit of $1.5 to $2 million, and in the next slide I show you, I'm using $2 million as our annual deficit. And when you consider that our overall budget is about $23 million, $2 million compared to an overall budget of $23 million is a big percentage, right? 10% of our budget. When you translate that into people, because again, if we're going to try to save $2 million, it ultimately will come down to staffing cuts. That's where you have to make the cuts. Imagine, with your calculator, how you're going to get to $2 million. And so I just did a little rough estimate, and this is what I came up with. So if you figure a typical certified staff member, which I call teachers, it could be teachers, it could also be social workers, it could be psychologists, but a certified staff member, and I use the number 60,000, which includes a salary, a lower-end salary and benefits package, to get to $2 million, that is a reduction of over 30 staff, certified staff members, 30. We currently have about 180 certified staff members. Or, we could get to the same number by getting, eliminating about 60 of our ESPs, support personnel, teacher aides, if you will, because their compensation is about half, let's say on average, of a certified staff member. We employ about 75 assistants. So you would be virtually eliminating our assistants. Or administratively, using a number of about 130,000, and I just kind of made that up, I didn't do any math, but that would be 15 administrators. Our buildings have six total. Our district office employs another 11, 12. So you're looking at a vast majority of our administrative staff. Or, looking at places you can save that aren't personnel-related. So the last thing, of course, is, you need to look at school supplies, what does that mean? Well, the first place that we would have to consider is extracurricular programming, so sports, clubs, you would save the money on stipends, you would save the money on officials, transportation, those types of things. Our co-curricular programs, our band choir orchestra programs, which we love immensely, it's a huge part of this district and community, but it would have to be one of the things that we would look at. Or, the most likely scenario is some combination of all those things. So I don't, you know, and I'll say this, I'll say this every night for the next three months, I do not want to use fear mongering to try to tell our story. This is the reality of our financial situation. We will balance our budget, 100%, and we're either going to do it by getting additional revenue to cover our costs, or dramatically decreasing our costs. That's the only way it can happen. But we are required by law to balance our budget. So we will do it. And what we are asking for is to do it without harming our students ultimately, is really what it comes down to.
Simply put, cutting costs will change the schools we want in Homewood to schools which no longer reflect our educational mission. All children will learn, all children will be served. We will be hard-pressed to do that if this referendum doesn't pass. And again, our community has told us loud and clear, this is what we believe schools should look like. This is what we believe a Homewood education should be. And we are hoping that the voters in Homewood continue to say, yes, this is what we want Homewood schools to look like.
So, what are our goals? There's really three things, and you'll hear this again frequently over the coming months, there's three things we intend to do if we are successful with this referendum. The first is to eliminate that deficit, right? We want to get rid of it, not just for the next five, six, seven years, and then ask again. We want to put a permanent end to that problem by getting a limiting rate increase. Second is back to that rainy day fund. When I said we have, we're now below our 25% threshold, our goal is to build that fund back up. Many of our surrounding districts have anywhere from six to nine months' worth of cash on hand to pay their bills. We are at about three, which is particularly problematic if this doomsday scenario of the Cook County not providing us our revenue in a timely matter comes to fruition. And unfortunately, if you've been watching the news, it's coming to fruition. They've told us, you are not going to get your fall property tax revenues until December. We normally get them in August. So right now, we are spending money down, and we don't have any revenue coming from the county to pay us. They're delayed, okay? So we are, Dr. Gibson and I are business manager, just today, we're on a conference call with one of our bond consultants. How are we going to basically pay that shortfall, given that Cook County isn't giving us our tax revenue on time? That's what the rainy day fund would help prevent. So goal two is to build that fund back up. And then goal three, our facilities are older, age is relative, right? Age is relative, but... So how many of you remember in April, if you have kids at Willow, you remember this very well? It was somewhat cold in April, and we had a pipe burst, and suddenly, we didn't have heat in our classrooms. That's the pipe. We asked our maintenance crew to actually save it, because we want you to see what 60, 70-year-old pipes look like. That's what burst, finally gave way, right? And if you go down into the bowels of our buildings, they're covered in insulation, so most of the time, you actually can't see that pipe in its present state. But that was one of the issues, that is one of the issues that we're dealing with, is just aging infrastructure. And no different than your home, it needs to be updated, it needs to be replaced, it needs to be maintained. And in a laundry list of things that we need to do to our buildings, it's easy to say, well, the pipes can wait, right? Like, the pipes can wait. When I got a roof leaking over my head, the pipes can wait until they can't. And when they can't, is when they burst in the middle of winter, or at least a cooler day. So let me show you, this is kind of an interesting way. Remember I said that education has changed? The manner in which we are educating kids today with interventionists and pull-outs and fine arts programming is very different, certainly than when I was in school, where I was with the same teacher pretty much all day. So I want you to look at our buildings. This is Willow, broken down by presidential administration when various additions were put on. Willow was built in 1952. We almost had to get Harry Truman up there. Not Harry Truman, but we do have Dwight Eisenhower, right? Oh, we do have Truman, my goodness! He was in 1952, yeah. So we have Truman, we have Eisenhower. I mean, you see those, and most of us, that's a history book, right? That's not reality, that's when Willow was first constructed. And then we did additions, and you can see, the most recent addition, Bill Clinton was president. We faintly remember Bill Clinton, right? So that's Willow. No major work has been done since the second-grade wing was added 27 years ago. Churchill, one president, LBJ, it was built in the 60s, some of those wings were put on, so we have the original building in '64, and then '66, and then '68 for that current fourth-grade wing, but nothing major at Churchill since the 60s. And then James Hart, you can see the same thing, nothing since George W. Bush in 2002, the sports complex cafeteria area there. So 20 years is the most recent work on any of our campuses. Now, this summer, it's a beehive of activity, right? That is work that we were able to complete, because every district is able to borrow some money, and the metaphor I'll use for you, or the analogy, rather, is, it's like putting money on a credit card, right? Like, we can charge up to our credit limit without asking for approval. So to get this HVAC work done, that we're doing right now, putting new heating units in every classroom, we have borrowed up to our borrowing limit. And we did that specifically now, because COVID brought to the forefront air quality, and the federal government said, here's some extra money to use toward air quality. So the timing was really, really good in that regard. But we are now at our borrowing limit. So we can't borrow any more money without getting voter approval.
So as homeowners and voters, obviously, our big question is, how much is this going to cost me? For a homeowner with a home that has an assessed value of $150,000, so that is not the amount that you would put your home on the market for, or that someone would buy your home for. This is the equalized assessed value that the county has put on your home, it is on your tax bill, you can find it. The increase will be $460 a year, so that's $38 a month, $1.27 a day. If you have a senior exemption, the impact will be less. So for a $150,000 home in our community, it would be $1.27 a day. But, wait, there's more. And it's good news. So will the increase be forever? No, the increase will not be forever, because if you recall, we sold those bonds. We are still paying the bonds back. We will be paying the bonds back for three more years. So, once the bonds are paid off, the annual increase will go down by approximately $152 for that same home. Now, let's face it, there is never a good time to ask a community for more money. Both times that we've done the referendum to sell bonds, and way back in '92, I worked on that one also, it wasn't a good time. But, there is really never a good time to tell children they cannot have the education that they need and deserve. So this is the choice that we are making here.
Yeah, the only thing I will point out on this chart, and again, I know you're seated somewhat far from it, and you haven't seen it before, but let me just interpret a little bit of what you're looking at. This is 2021, extending all the way out to 2032. The colors you see, blue, red, gray, green, brown, represent different times that the district has borrowed money. district has borrowed money. And so over time, you pay one off and then you borrow additional funds. You pay them off and borrow additional funds, kind of like you would do with maybe car payments. So this blue series bonds were from 2008. They will be fully paid off in two years. The red represents bonds from 2015. They will be paid off in 2027. The gray represents 2017. Those are the result of a referendum and they are being retired this year. And then the green represents the bonds from the last referendum. And that's what Shelley was just referring to. So for fiscal year '22, '23, and '24, we are still paying off those bonds, but after that point, you see the green disappears. And that's when we will have paid off the last referendum debt. The brown that you see is the money that we have borrowed, including this summer, which will be fully retired in 2032. So it's an ongoing cycle, but basically what we're saying is, remember back to our, our credit card limit? We have reached our limit here. We cannot borrow anymore because we have hit our peak. And by, by statute, you can only borrow up to a certain percentage and we are at that limit. So we have to retire some debt before we can incur more. But, but that's a nice little visual to kind of show how debt works in cycles and how the district pays that off over time. Yes?
I'm going to repeat the question since we're recording this. If the referendum does pass, or I would like to interpret that as when the referendum passes, when will the school begin to see the revenue from the referendum?
Yeah, and that's a, again, one of the confusing questions of public school finance. There's three, there's three dates, if you will, to consider. Levy year, right? Fiscal year, and then calendar year, or when we collect the revenue relative to when it's levied. So this, this chart is showing you levy years. So right now, we are in tax levy '22 to be collected in year, calendar year '23, right? So the answer to your question in simple terms would be 2023. And then we operate on fiscal years which start on January, I'm sorry, July 1st. So we would be able, if the referendum went through, we would be able to collect that revenue in '23 to apply toward fiscal year '24, 2023, '24 school year.
Other questions?
Yes.
I'm going to start that one and I'll repeat the question. How has the district cut costs since the last referendum, since we were aware of the, I guess what you mean, the structural deficit? Okay. I'm going to interpret it that way because that's what it sounded like. Okay. So the bonds were sold to meet the structural deficit. We knew there was going to be a deficit. We knew we were going to need another referendum right about now. What we didn't know was that we would be able to do this with a limiting rate referendum and not a sale of bond referendum. Is there a list, a RIF list, if the referendum fails and have we prioritized what the cuts will be? First of all, there's been an increase in everything since the last referendum in costs for certified staff and costs for non-certified staff and administrative costs, in supplies, in insurance. Everything has gone up since the last referendum. So it would probably be a little disingenuous to pick out one piece and say, well, what about this? What about that? We have to look at the district as a whole. And in order to teach the kids we have in the best possible way, we're spending the money in the way that we believe will serve our kids in that way. Like I said before, any cuts at all are going to impact every child in the district. But we have not created a list because we are choosing to be optimistic that the community will once again say, these are the schools that we want.
But, but, yeah, no, absolutely. There is a, there is a RIF list that we are working on, which we'll do together. And basically, the RIF list is if we got to that point, which positions would be eliminated and in what order? And, and that's determined by law, right? Like there's, there's a, there's specific requirements that happen with a RIF list. So we will do positions and then of course, you know, staff member A, whoever that is, may hold multiple certifications. So if you eliminate this position that staff member A holds, but they are also endorsed in another area, they may bump another person who then gets, gets cut. So yeah, the bottom line is the list kind of gives us which positions and in what order. And then each staff member would be placed with all the endorsements that they have. But as far as a prioritization, so to say, whatever, this, this subject versus this one, not yet, but it will be. It has to be, right? Like it'll be, it'll be in place. And what I've asked is that we have that done by October, which is in advance of the referendum.
So the question is, the district prioritized fixing up the district office over classrooms? And how will the board ensure that the classrooms get the attention? So I think maybe there's a misunderstanding. The district office had not had any attention, just like some of the classrooms. But we have a long-range plan for our buildings and what needs to be addressed. The work that was done in the district office was done in-house, correct?
Well, there were, yeah, there were, there were some contractors, but, but the most recent district office work, which I assume the question is referring to, was the addition of a bathroom and the expansion of the, kind of the outer office where a registrar sits. And I, I would say that the first impression that families get when they enter our district office is important and to have space to provide confidentiality is important, as well as an additional washroom. All said, the dollars for that, a small fraction of what's being spent on our buildings. And again, I'm not here to say that, that that money is more important or less important. What I'm saying is it's, it's all important. We're spending over $9 million to address our building needs this summer. That dwarfs any money spent on a district office improvement. But, but it's all important. I mean, the perception and the service that we provide our families is important. So that was work that needed to be done in the district office a few years ago, as is the work that's being done right now.
And we are very, very excited and optimistic about addressing the needs of the three school buildings, primarily Willow and Churchill, that have significant needs that we can't wait to have the money to take care of. The question is, will the teachers have any input into how the facility money will be spent?
Yeah. So in 2019, there were significant plans drawn up to address a lot of the issues, space issues, again, aging issues at Willow and Churchill specifically. And staff played a vital role in the creation of those plans. I would say, and I've reviewed those plans recently, I would say they're still fairly accurate as to our needs, although the work that's being done this summer has obviously eliminated some of that work from being necessary, should we get to that point. But yeah, we'll definitely revisit it. And my guess is the needs would be identified as similar, but yeah, we want to make sure that if we move forward with work, that it's the most recent, well-thought-out plan we can come up with. Absolutely. They're, they're the people that work there, right? Like that's...
And as you recall, I think it was in the fall, we sent out a survey to all staff, asking what are the priorities? And we took that input and really used it to formulate what we did this summer and what we're planning for next summer. The question is, the new teacher's contract, and actually it's a contract for all staff other than our administrative staff, is only two years. Did that have something to do with the referendum?
I don't know if I understand exactly that question. Well, I mean, all I can say about the, the negotiations process was both parties sat down at the table and that's what we came up with, right? Like we, we settled on a two-year contract. Both parties agreed to that. So I mean, what might happen with a referendum, in my opinion at least, had no bearing on the length of the contract. That was what, that was what we ultimately agreed on between both sides, so, yeah.
Other questions or comments?
So I'm, I'm a parent and a homeowner here in Homewood. Moved here 10 years ago. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, my dick over. And, and I'm here not only as a parent and a, and a homeowner here in Homewood, but also as a co-chair for an organization called Citizens for Homewood Schools. We've actually been around for 10 years. We go dormant when we're not needed and then when we are needed in situations like this, when we're called to, to action to help support a referendum, we jump to it. So this is our third time around. As, as both Dr. McAllister and Ms. Marks mentioned, you know, this, this went to action in, in 2011 and then in 2016. And I just wanted to, to just say a couple of things that, you know, we moved here 10 years ago because of, one, the diverse community. We love, we love living in a diverse community. And two, the reputation of the schools. And I can't imagine living anywhere else besides here. The schools that we have, the, the services that are offered are above what you can get, you know, in and around the area, right? I, I think what was alluded to earlier with, you know, having interventionists and psychologists and, you know, at each school for, for our kids, that's huge coming out of COVID. You know, that, that's, that gives these kids someone to talk to, someone to, you know, just bounce ideas off of and, and help them feel safe and comfortable here in school. And that's, you know, you can't, you can't put a price on that. And so anyways, what, I guess the long and the short of it is, I'm here to just let everyone know that we are an organization, we're going to be working for the next three months to get the word out on why this referendum is important, why we need to say yes on November 8th, and, and why, not only just helps our, our schools, but I mean selfishly, if you have lived here for a while, look at what your home value has done. It's gone through the roof in 10 years. You know, I want to be here for another 10 years and I want to see that, that happen selfishly, not just to, you know, have, have our kids have a great education. Thank you.
Dana? The question was, how much did the last referendum cost a homeowner over the seven-year period? Dr. Gibson, do you have that number? I know it's in our FA... Oh, that's true. Yeah. The 152 is coming off the books, which is what, which is what went on. So approximately 152 a year. Yeah.
The reason that we chose to do this in November is we want to add, it's our way of saying to the community, what do you want? This is what we believe as a board, that we need to keep the schools the way they are. Does the community want that? If the community says no, there is another election in April that we can ask again, ask in a different way. But if we want to keep things the way they are, that, that's why we put this on the ballot for November. Yeah. Right.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, what I would say Dana is, what are, those cuts obviously would be for the next school year, right? That would be fiscal year '24. So that gives us, you know, five months to try to figure something out, including another election in April. Well, the, yeah, the RIF lists are, yes, absolutely. Yeah. I mean, it's important, it's important that we have a list in place all the time. It's especially important going into a referendum. But yeah, that, that list would be by position and it would be in advance of the referendum. Yeah.
Yes. It's really, it's really...
Just for the TV on.
Okay, it's really awkward. So full disclosure, I'm Annie Lawrence. I'm also working with Citizens for Homewood Schools. I've lived in Homewood my entire life. I actually ended up going to Flassmore Schools because my parents didn't realize that our house in Homewood was not in Homewood Schools and we were very jealous because of, of all of the things we knew Homewood did. But we were here for the last, all three of the last referendums, and I know my family would have voted for it had it happened. But I think the most important thing to point out is that right now, I'm also an educator and educators are leaving in droves. We're leaving our schools. We can't do it anymore. We can't do it with the facilities we have. We can't do it with the money we're getting. We can't do it with, with COVID. I mean, we all went home and turned our kitchens and our bedrooms into classrooms and then we came back to buildings that we couldn't work in. And so I think it's really important to recognize the sacrifice that teachers have made and educators have made through COVID. And now it's time to make a sacrifice for our educators. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the audience? Any questions or comments from the board?
I just wanted to clarify something. And I think oftentimes we say things and people like myself will not acknowledge when we're unaware what something means. So I've spent 20-plus years in finance, but I want to be clear on the difference, difference between a structural deficit and a deficit. All right? So let me just read the definition. Structural deficit, a budget deficit that results from a fundamental imbalance in government... a structural deficit and a deficit, all right? So, let me just read the definition. Structural deficit, a budget deficit that results from a fundamental imbalance in government receipts and expenditures, as opposed to one based on one-off or short-term factors. I want to be clear, because I've heard several times, what could you have done differently? We would have funded ourselves if we could. We would have passed something ourselves to get receipts from commercial business. We would have a casino that funds us. We would receive the sale of medicinal marijuana that we'll promise. We would receive 100% of the funding from the lottery. Those things are not happening. So, with a structural deficit, I think that it's, you know, we're very fortunate that we've been able to sustain the class sizes, the support for our teachers, and it's not perfect, and the funding that we have, considering the structural deficit. I want to be clear there, since I've been on the board and before I got on the board, we've passed our audits. And, you know, all of us, when we're asked to consider or interested in joining the board, you interview in a way, but you're also interviewing the district. You're interviewing those that are responsible, have a fiduciary responsibility. And personally, I cannot participate in any boards or anything outside of my business, my job, that would put not only my name at risk, but my company's name at risk. So, we do a lot of certifying. And so, I just want to be clear with structural deficit. It's really a black and white, a wet and dry. There's nothing in between. It's a referendum or not. And if not, that's unfortunate for our students, as you mentioned. So, I just wanted to add that.
Well said. Any other board members have any comments or questions? All right. So, I want you to know that on our website, there are FAQs addressing many of the things that we know people will be asking about the referendum. And, again, this is a way that we can maintain the schools that we have come to need for our children, that are meeting the needs of our children, and preparing them to be really good citizens. So, we wish we weren't in this position. We wish that we were fully funded, but we're not, and this is a way, as a school district, that we can continue to do the really, really good things that we do with kids. Ah, now we can see. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that has come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? All right. And we have not had any questions or concerns at our previous meetings, so we don't have any answers. Are there any board members who have any reports on any committees or meetings you've attended? Superintendent's report.
So, registration. School begins, as I said, a week from Wednesday. Today's Monday, right? Yes. So, nine days, we'll be welcoming kids, and certainly better in terms of registration than we were a month ago when I talked. And at this point, 94% of the people that we expect to be back have submitted applications in some way, shape, or form. About 8% of those are still on hold, though. So, when families are put on hold, it is largely because of residency verification. So, there's certain documents that have to be uploaded that we do review, and if somebody gets put on hold, it's likely because they haven't provided all the documents that we need. So, we want to make sure we have all of our kids here on the first day, so that's really important that we get that taken care of. Construction, earlier, you know, I mentioned that this summer has been construction in all three of our campuses. The last few days in particular, Shelley and I have been around looking at all the buildings, and quite frankly, we're not where we thought we would be in terms of preparedness. Part of that is due to supply constraints, which you hear about in the news all the time. One of the big supply issues we're dealing with is labor, and quite frankly, we haven't had the bodies here that we need. So, what I will, and I'll be sending something out to our families to notify all of you to this effect, but we're accustomed to coming in. And James Hart, when you walked in, it looked just like you'd expect, shiny, waxed floors, everything in order for the most part. All of our buildings are not going to look that way on day one. Quite frankly, at this point, our priority is making sure we get safe rooms and clean rooms. They may not be the shiny places that we've come to expect, but they will be ready for school. And so, we're working extra hard these last few days to get that done. And our staff, they have really been accommodating because of this work, and it's not ideal under any circumstances. So, I appreciate everything that they're doing to prepare for kids in the midst of a work environment, for lack of a better term. But we are excited. I mean, having, again, going back to those maps, having new heating units for the first time in 50, 60 years is going to make a world of difference in terms of the learning environment. Churchill will be getting an addition that will open in '23. We have a mobile unit at Willow, which is nearly complete. We have an inspection on that to go, but that'll provide them with some relief. So, we're doing some important things, things that staff had asked about and requested, which we know to be issues, and there's still other things on our list, to be quite honest. But we're excited about the work that's been done. COVID, you know, it's strange. This morning, I talked to our new staff, and I said, a year ago, I was standing up here doing this with a mask on. And now, you know, certainly, we're in a different place with regard to masks. What's one of the frustrating things, which keeps rearing its ugly head, though, is that the government is giving us guidance at the 11th hour. And sure enough, last Thursday, the CDC released revised COVID guidance. After, I would point out, many schools are already in session. We're nearing to be in session, so we're going to be reviewing that. Our nurses are going to be reviewing that guidance to see if, first and foremost, IDPH adopts the federal guidance, which they typically have, we expect them to, and then what does that mean for us? But if you look at that CDC guidance, there are some pretty substantial changes over things that we have grown accustomed to, such as quarantining and shield testing. So, more information will be coming out soon, once we've had a chance to digest that. Staffing, you know, Annie mentioned, turn on the news, staffing is a real, real issue. It's become, in a very short period of time, I mean, I was the James Hart principal for seven years, and when I started in 2013, you would have an opening, and there would be literally dozens of applicants to go through, when deciding who you're going to bring in for an interview. And at this point, it is not an exaggeration to say, in many cases, there aren't applicants, and I mean zero. That's not an exaggeration. And oftentimes, what ends up happening is we are stealing from our neighbors at, you know, the weeks before school starts, which is not a good feeling either. You know, employees obviously have the right to choose where they want to work, but I have a difficult time when our employees are leaving Friday. We had a resignation to go to another district. That puts us in an impossible position to fill our classrooms adequately. Right now, we have five positions that are not filled, and we have never, never had that. So, our principals, all three of whom are seated in the back, are working overtime to find applicants, to find the best people we can. And all I can say is, we pride ourselves on being an incredibly accommodating, good place to work. There's a lot of places you can go, and you watch some of the dysfunction that you see, and I would like to think, this is not bad, right? But we also know people have more ability to move in the education profession than they've ever had before. In the old days, you hit 10 years, you're likely to stay the rest of your career. People weren't going to give you and pay you your years of experience. Now, it is a different world. We're hiring people tonight, 20-some years' experience, and paying them accordingly, because that's what it takes to get high-quality teachers. So, back to the issue of money, why do costs go up over time? Because people are more expensive, especially in this labor market. So, you know, I've said as a principal, and I'll say in this chair, the most important thing I do is hire good people, because they make everything else better. And when you struggle to find good people, the problems go with that. So, if you, any of you sitting here, know of great people who want to work in a wonderful school district with a board that supports you and with a community that supports you, please tell them to apply, right? At this point, we're not going to poach from our neighbors, right? We're going to make do, and we have some good people lined up. Again, thank you to the principals. We have good people lined up to start our school year. But moving forward, this is a concern, not just in District 153. I know a neighbor district, nine positions at their middle school not filled, nine in one building, and that's right next door. I have real concerns for our profession, and I'm just going to say it. And unless we, as a society, decide that education is important and make changes accordingly, this problem isn't going to fix itself overnight. It's really not. All that said...
Can I just interject something?
Yeah.
We, if you know someone who maybe doesn't want a full-time teaching gig, but would like to substitute teach...
Always use them to...
One day a week, one day a month? We, and it's fun, like, you get to be a fly on the wall, so substitute teachers as well.
Also, shameless plug for those interested in driving buses as well.
Yes.
Absolutely.
We have a wonderful CDL class right down the street.
Right, at Perry State College, yes, we do that.
Yeah, so, put that out there as well.
I've entertained the thought of getting my CDL. I mean, I'm here early, I can do a bus route, I may end up doing that. But, all that said, the people that I met this morning, our new staff that we're bringing onboard, a fabulous group, and I reviewed the names of the people we hired last year, and 90, 95% of them returned this year, and it is a really strong group. So, we are finding great people. It's just getting harder and harder. That's the bottom line. So, whatever we can do in that area is appreciated. And then, last but not least, positive, right? Like, this is the exciting time of year. I love August, I love the excitement that comes with it, sitting in my office, looking outside today and seeing cross-country, seeing our baseball and softball teams compete. So, fall sports are back, and that's always great to see our kids. I believe that's it.
All right. We have got some consent agenda items and other business to take care of. If you have someplace else that you would rather be tonight, we completely understand that you may have come to hear the presentation on the referendum. Our feelings won't be hurt. We love it when people hang around, but we don't want anyone to feel obligated if Dairy Queen or something else is calling you. Okay, consent agenda. We have several consent agenda items. The first is to authorize the chief school business official to pay the usual and customary bills for September 2022. Any questions? And the second is the personnel report.
Yes, you all have in your packet the personnel report. It is lengthy, again, lots of people moving positions, as I talked about a moment ago. But we're excited with some reassignments, we're excited with some long-term subs who are helping out, and again, you can see some of the other individuals listed there.
We need to set the date and time for public hearing for FY '23 budget.
Yes, so that will be next month that we review our budget, which also ties into changing the time, so we can do that.
And we need to change the time of the regularly scheduled board meeting for September 19.
Yes, that will be 7:15 is when the board meeting will begin, immediately after the budget presentation.
And we have a recommendation for change orders.
So, part of the ongoing construction that we're doing, there are some change orders that inevitably come about as things come up. The good news here is none of these are resulting in increased costs, because it was all part of our contingency monies, so it's basically a change in what's being done, but certainly not a change in what we're spending.
Any questions on the consent agenda from the board or the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented in Items 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D, and 7E.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. We have several action agenda items. The first is the second payment of July 2022 bills and the first payment of August 2022 bills. Any questions? Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official at the Board of Education, authorized a second payment of July 2022 bills and the first payment of August 2022 bills in an amount not to exceed $2,706,594.48.
Second, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. We have approval of the proposal for installation of the fire alarm and cameras for Willow Modular Building.
Yes, the final step in getting that modular unit prepared and ready for Willow is the installation of a fire alarm by code and also cameras. The cost that you see there is very similar to what we paid when we had the Churchill modular installed three years ago.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Of the chief school business official that the board approved the proposal for the purchase and installation of the fire alarm and cameras for the Willow Modular Building in the amount of $76,800.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. We have approval of the proposal with Hygieneering, Inc.
Yes, Hygieneering is the company that oversaw the work at Churchill in terms of asbestos abatement. And this little guy here, again, coming from the bowels of Willow, those pipes need to be replaced, so, again, we're looking for Hygieneering to oversee that work.
Questions? By the way, this pipe has, several pieces have fallen off just in the last hour. Okay. Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the board approved the proposal with Hygieneering, Inc., to manage the removal of asbestos in the tunnels of Willow School in a safe and legal manner at a cost of $25,298.90.
Second.
Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. We have approval of the proposal with Safe Engineering Corporation.
So, Hygieneering will oversee the work, Safe Engineering will do the work. That's really the difference.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the board approved the proposal with Safe Engineering Corporation to provide all labor, materials, and equipment to perform the removal and disposal of asbestos in the tunnels at Willow for the total cost of $37,250. Includes $2,350 in notification fees to Cook County and IEPA, period.
Second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Forgot I need a "as" man, I want to say "yes."
Yes. Yes. Motion carries. We have employment.
Yes, as I mentioned, we had several new staff that I got to meet with this morning. So, welcome to the 153 family. Kathy Gill, math teacher at Hart. Nikki Sawalchuk, choir teacher at Churchill. Stacy Swart, an assistant at Willow. Barrett Harmon, perm sub at Churchill. Amelia O'Donnell, music teacher at Willow. Summer Salem, kindergarten teacher. Deloria Payne, a supervisor at Churchill. Gail Platuric. And listen to all these people working in our food service. I mean, this is really exciting. So, we talked about bus drivers, we talked about teachers, we talked about substitutes, and we are employing a lot of new faces in our food service, so that's another option for people looking for work. Deloria Payne, a supervisor at Churchill. I talked about Gail. Geraldine Wilson, server dishwasher at James Hart. Gail Platuric, server dishwasher at James Hart. Letitia Lagounis and Linda Drake cooks at Churchill. Laura Rios, cashier at James Hart. Heather O'Malley, cashier at Willow. Evangelina Burtand, cashier at Churchill. Erica Magana, cashier at James Hart. And Tyler Palomo, a new technology support assistant. So, big list, great people.
Very excited. They were awesome to meet with today. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education approved the employment of Kathy Gill, my apologies for mispronouncing, Nikki Sawalchuk, Stacy Swart, Barrett Harmon, Amelia O'Donnell, Summer Salem, Deloria Payne, Gail Plachurik, Geraldine Wilson, Letitia Lagunas, Linda Drake, Laura Rios, Heather O'Malley, Evangelina Burtan, Erica Magana, and Tyler Paloma, effective August 22, 2022, upon the terms recommended by the superintendent, conditioned only upon receipt of a satisfactory criminal background report and upon receipt no later than August 24 of evidence of proper legal qualifications for the positions to be filled.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Any discussion items? I have one. We have buildings full of extraordinary people, teachers, food service, administrators, secretaries. Unfortunately, we lost one of our most extraordinary teachers about 10 days ago. And while Carol Smith was retired, she never left her building. She was here day after day after day, doing what she could to make James Hart and our students better. She also served the community in so many different ways. There's virtually no one in Homewood that didn't know Carol. So I'd like us to just observe a moment of silence in Carol's memory. Thank you. Is there any written communication to the board? No, ma'am. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You guys all seconded. I'm like, what do I do now? We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Have a good night.